According to members present at the...
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December 15th of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least 24 hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view at the location of the meeting.
Consent agenda. All the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. Consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following. Addition of items to new business to the agenda?
There are none.
3.2, minutes of the May 4th regular meeting. Approval of finance report, approval of the activity fund report, approval of activity fund fundraisers, approval of activity fund interaccount transfers, approval of the child nutrition report, and declare the following items.
Okay, we'll go back to 3.2, the minutes for the May 4th 2020 meeting, and I did not see any errors in that. On 3.3, our finance report, the first attachment, I'm gonna open that up for you and walk you through that. This is just the monthly, our chargeable collections, and let's see if I can... You can tell just by looking at this that, again, over a million down, that we've collected less as compared to last year in our gross production. Two other areas that we're down in, REA and our school land earnings, so... And that's been the trend, and we've talked about that a lot, and we will continue to see that over the next few months. So, you know, we just are mindful of that as we begin looking at our next year and our purchases and our supplies and that sort of thing. I also included in this report a comparison, and I had showed you these comparisons earlier in the year and kind of have gotten away from it, but I wanted to show you again, and it really compares our revenue and expenses from FY '19 to FY '20, and FY '20 is the top graph. And you can tell that it's really pretty similar from an expense, and where you see the real difference is our revenue has dropped considerably. And so, again, we'll continue to see that. We're just not collecting what we were, and I think that's just a trend for everyone economically in the times that we're at. So, any questions about finance report, our revenue, or our collections, I can come back to it if you need it. 3.4, our activity fund report. Activity fund reports are pretty... Everything appears to be... Well, it's pretty slow right now. We haven't had the activity funds, the collection or the expenses. There will be a few this summer as there are, you know, your fireworks stand and some of those things, but it will continue to be pretty slow until we get to the new school year. So, not much change in our activity funds at this point. 3.5, our fundraisers. No fundraisers this month. 3.6, there are no interaccount transfers. 3.7, our child nutrition report. Just kind of wanted to give you some numbers. Over the school closing, we served 15,000 meals, and so a real credit to our cooks, Mrs. Echols, they did a great job. You can't forget Darren Kearns and Steve Ellis. We had volunteers, too many to name, that delivered food. We had paraprofessionals that delivered food, and so it was a really good service and something that I think really helped our community. So, that is our child nutrition report, and we don't have anything to surplus this month. Are there any questions about the consent agenda?
Do I motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Those items referenced in 3.2, 3.3, 3.4, 3.7.
Second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Vote to approve purchase order in conferences for the following funds for 15 years' one. 4.1, general fund as referenced. 4.2, building fund as referenced. 4.3, child nutrition fund as referenced. And 4.4, fierce fund as referenced.
Okay, so just a couple of the purchase orders from our general fund. 637 for $12,000, that's an open purchase order to get us through the remainder of the school year with the city of Alba. You will notice that throughout there you'll see AHS fax supplies and AMS fax appliances, and those are purchases that are done, and then we complete an expense report and then are reimbursed for those through the state. So, you see those throughout. That's some money that needed to be used to be reimbursed. You also see in there some of our purchases that we've made in preparation for the school year and the summer. You see 644 Jenkins &amp; Price and 652 Jenkins &amp; Price also. That's custodial supplies. We've ordered some. One of the things that we used this past year were some handheld sprayers that help disinfect classrooms, and so we ordered some more of those to use throughout the buildings in preparation for the next year. And then you can also see 658, some summer cleaning supplies as our custodians get prepared for the summer. Any questions about our general fund expenses?
When it comes to the... Antifactual thing, are you able to get a hold of that kind of stuff? I didn't know if that was hard to find or if the price is double. I'm just curious.
It is. It is hard to find, and so what they're doing, Miss Kane, that's a really good question. What they're doing is when we order something, what the companies are doing is they're giving you partial orders.
Okay.
So, they're not going to completely fulfill our order. They're going to give us some of it so that they can get it out to everybody that needs it.
Sure, everybody has something to keep them going.
Everybody's got something, and so we've still got some things that we're still waiting on. They tell us that they hope by the middle of June to July that we caught back up for a little bit.
And with all of the activities resuming with OSSAA, cleaning buses, I mean, do we have funds to pay for all... I mean, it sounds like a really good plan, but I wonder how expensive that will be to spray down a bucket of softballs or whatever we need to do.
So, what we've done, Woods County Emergency Management has given us free cleaner and sanitizer.
Okay.
And so, on a weekly basis, at Fairview, you can go pick that up. And so, we've actually... We have... We purchased spray bottles for sanitizer and disinfectant, and we filled those up and labeled those, and we've handed those out to any employee that's having any interaction or summer program.
Sure.
We checked all those out today, and probably are going to have to purchase some more, but from a cleaning perspective, Woods County Emergency Management has helped us out tremendously.
Good enough. Thank you.
Uh-huh. Any other questions?
Is there any federal reimbursement that was for the thermometer in the back actual purchasing? Do you expect any of that?
So, we... What we received, they call it cares funds, and it was about 85... 83% of our Title I funding, and so we anticipate that to be approximately $123,000 at this point. It's a reimbursable program, so we have to complete an application by June 30th for how we're going to spend it through the next fiscal year. And we can spend, and it can include purchases this fiscal year also. Part of those funds can be used for cleaning materials. Really, there's about 12 categories you can use to spend the funds on. One of them is cleaning. That's one of the major categories, but then it's really open. So, we're going to be looking at not only fulfilling part of that issue that we have, but also from a technology standpoint in preparation for next year.
Okay.
We don't know if we're going to get any more than that at this point, and we don't know if we'll get any next fiscal year, but we can use it up until then.
There's some other county. I mean, we...
Yes.
But it's hard. I mean, to have something as like a whole home budget. It sounds like a great idea, but we've got to have the funds to pay for it.
And it's important as we use that money, that it's one-time expenditures. We don't know that we'll get that again.
Right.
And so, we've got to be careful how we spend it because it may not be there anymore.
Getting spray bottles is hard for me in Alba. It's so good if you can get your hands on some of those.
We're not telling where we got them.
I didn't... You may have been to the Woodnext, but I don't know. Put that in the paper, Marion. Thank you.
Uh-huh. Any other questions about the general fund? Okay, our building fund, we have no expenses out of that this month. And then 4.3, we have one expense, repairs to the walk-in freezer, $450 with three dog here at the high school. And then we have no expenses out of our gift fund.
Consent agenda report?
Oh, I think we do.
You can tell.
Then I make the motion that we approve 4.1, do 4.4 as presented. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Now, consent agenda report.
Okay, we have three resignations that you can see that are attached. We have a resignation from Dalton Miller as his assistant high school football coach. He will continue to teach special ed here at the high school. And then we have a resignation from Ruth Cole, pre-K teacher at Washington, and Whitney Cotton, a pre-K teacher at Washington. They are going to move into the unit and teaching in it, and so we wish them the best of luck. Communication. I think I may start first, and then I'll have Mr. McClure talk just a little bit. To kind of piggyback off of Miss Kane's question, I want to thank our coaches, our activity sponsors, our teachers that are working with students this summer. We've spent a lot of time coming up with mitigation plans and strategies for our kids to get them back into some type of normalcy this summer. And so, you know, just to give you an idea, we talked a little earlier, passing out spray bottles and wiping things down. I know that today our teachers and sponsors spent a morning wiping things down and cleaning. You can tell when you walk into high school how clean it is walking into the high school. We moved equipment around. We've moved things around for social distancing. We have reallocated where our sprayers are located. We have one at the bus barn, so if there are activities that use the bus, the bus will be disinfected each time it's used. So, just spent a lot of time in preparation for that, and so appreciative of what they're doing. And we'll talk a little bit more about it when we get to the agenda item for summer pride. But just want to thank those sponsors and teachers and coaches. They've worked really hard. They're really ready to be around their kids, and I know that the kids are really ready to be around each other and get back to some normals. So, I want to have Mr. McClure come up here. I want him to give you a little bit of an update on the art building. As he's coming up here, bidding talks with our architect over the last week or so. There is a tentative schedule on there, and I think if there's anything we've probably learned in this time is that...
Very tentative.
Yeah, heavy on the tentative part of this schedule. There's still a lot of things as far as completing not only the drawings, but then as Kyler Construction begins working on the bidding and workforce and those sorts of things. We're still... There's still quite a bit out there in front. So, it gives us a little bit... I had asked for this to not only be able to communicate to you all as a board, but I know Mr. McClure, and as we move things and we find alternate rooms, it's important that we have some kind of idea of where we're at with the timeline. And so, now I'm going to let Mr. McClure talk about the good stuff, the fun stuff, some of these plans for the art building. So, I think this is about as...
It's about as big as...
...big as I'm going to try to get this without messing up. So, go ahead, Mr. McClure.
I'll start with, I want to thank you guys for having me up here and for all the support you give us. That's... Wouldn't be able to do what I do without support from you guys, and I really do appreciate it. The goal for the art building is for me to be able to control the entire building at one point. Right now, we have a lot of little rooms that are set up, and a lot of places that kids can sneak away, can hide in, can see me walk in one room and they walk into the next room. So, this is the tentative plan, and like Mr. Argos said, flexibility and the heavy on the tentative. We have to be... We've learned to be a little bit flexible on this. But we're going to start here with the main entrance, and as you walk into this area, there'll be leather work and sculpture and then a general work area right here, and that'll be the west side of the building here. Then this will be the 2D classroom where the students work on painting, watercolor, oil, acrylic, the printmaking, scratchboard, drawing, and this will be where the Art One class meets for the first 10, 12 weeks of the year before they move on into this area, which is sculpture, and then this will be pottery and jewelry making. This area here will be jewelry and metal design, and this will be a secure storage area. I have asked them for a cinder block wall with metal doors because with all the windows we have around this, there is no... There is no secure place at all for the students to go or for us to have a place to lock things up because we do a lot of things with jewelry, with turquoise, with silver. The student's artwork, once it's made, we really don't want to leave it sitting out for people to mess with, for things to get hurt, destroyed, tore up, and sometimes just a touch is all it takes, especially if you have a really nice pot, just made it, it's sitting on the table, and somebody walks up and they go, "Oh, my goodness, that's beautiful." And that's all it takes, is that one little touch to send it from being a state-winning showpiece to just another, you know, pocket we threw. So, this is what we've got going on here. We'll still have the kiln building outside, so we won't have to worry about any kind of high-performance ventilation system in the room because the kilns won't be in any part of the building. We are going to have a small vent right here, a small sucker fan over the jewelry area where they will be soldered. So, any kind of fumes that comes from that will be alleviated that way. That's just a real quick overview of what we're working on, and the way we have it worked with these doors being widened, I'll be able to be in this area here and have eyes on my whole classroom, which will eliminate any kind of sneakiness.
And I also might mention on this end, if I get the cursor. So, you can see right here, we've got restrooms that will be used for Mr. McClure's art class, and it'll be locked on these outside, but then we have little Olympics or any other events. We'll have access to public restrooms in here.
So, is that the... Is the top part the east side?
This right here is the east side. Yes, ma'am. Then this will be the west. The football field would be right here.
Any questions about that?
Will there still be a drive on the west side?
Yes, ma'am.
And what on...
Does that enough storage space for you?
Well, each... Each area is going to have its own storage space. We'll have shelves and lockers at each spot. So, like, if you're a potter over here, you're going to have storage and a lockable area to put your stuff here. And then if you're back here doing jewelry, you'll have a place for your stuff here. That way, it keeps people from running around all over the classroom looking for different supplies in different areas. So...
Anything else?
Are there any questions?
So, that gray... That gray out, the... Not the kiln, but the other gray out there.
Right. This is the middle school football locker.
It's okay. It will remain something.
Yes.
And that's their restrooms right next to... Do they have access to those restrooms?
Uh-huh. So, then it'll go into this way into those. Correct.
This is going to be really exciting. The students are way excited. I look for this to not only help my class, but also help to morale the students. When you have something that is nice, it's easier to, you know, take a lot of pride in what you have and what you do, and I think this is going to be a real big boost for the program.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thanks again. I appreciate it.
Any other questions that you might have?
Get the materials inside.
Is there any plan to upgrade the exterior? Is it in here?
No. You know, I talked to the architect about that because I think we would all agree that, and it's from an exterior perspective, we need to have some kind of a plan campus-wide. And so, I talked to Scott with Triarc about what can we do campus-wide to begin here with the art room with a vision in mind for the entire campus for the outside. And so, they're working on that. I don't have any definite plans or haven't been given anything from Scott, but he's aware that I think that's kind of the vision that we all feel like is important.
Do we have any roof issues there?
It'll be completely replaced. Yes, we have. Yes. Not only... In fact, we just talked to him about that today. Not only that flat roof where you come in, but then the entire roof will be replaced and it'll be new mechanical. Yeah. Anything else?
What's our budget or estimate of this?
So, originally our estimate when, and this was a preliminary at the very beginning, was $650,000. As you know, we're going to use our building fund to fund this project, and as you know, we have postponed all other projects. We had originally budgeted to spend with our other projects this year about $1.2 million, so we know that we will be able to not only complete the art room, but that also is going to allow us to move some of our other salaries and funds over to our building fund, alleviate some of the strain on the fund balance in our general fund, and allow us to use that building fund for some other items right now. Okay? That answer your question? That's all I have, Jane.
Thank you. 6.1, discussion of possible board action vote to rehire the following non-certified personnel for fiscal year number one.
Okay, I would just recommend to the board, this is all of our support staff, our non-certified staff for the FY 4th of school year. I would recommend that we rehire all those in Attachment A.
Do they go through an evaluation with their building administrator like you call us?
Yes. Every site administrator or director completes a support evaluation.
I would make the motion that we rehire the non-certified personnel as shown in FY '20 in Attachment A.
Second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
6.2, discussion of possible board action vote to approve the following summer school classes and instructors. 6.2.1, summer driver's education for session June 2nd through the 12th, 2020, and second session June 15th through the 25th, 2020. And we want to do all six together?
Yes.
6.2.1.1 through Dale.
So, our summer driver's session, I want to thank Mr. Dale has been in constant contact with me over the last really month to figure out a way that we could provide driver's education for our students. And from rearranging desks to posters, planning out times for breaks, wiping down vehicles, spraying vehicles, he's... He has got a plan to screening students. He's got a plan of action to be able to serve those kids, and I would recommend that we approve our summer driver's education sessions and Mr. Dale to teach those.
I would make that motion. About 6.2.1 and 6.2.1.1.1.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
6.3, discussion of possible board action vote to approve a $175 fee to be charged for the summer driver's education program.
I think this is the fee that we've charged for a few years now. I will tell you that our enrollment, probably maybe should mention this, enrollment, we're looking at about 10 students first session and three students the second session.
You said 10 and 3?
10 and 3.
10 and 3?
10 and 3. And that may have fluctuated from Friday to now because they tell me sometimes it's lasting a day. But I would recommend that we approve this $175 fee for driver's education.
So, move?
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
6.4, discussion of possible board action vote to approve summer pride athletic camp for the summer of 2020.
And you'll see the attachment there for the summer pride athletic camp. Doing it a little bit differently this year. Number one, waiving the fee for our students. Decided that we're not going to work with our elementary students in summer pride this year and just focus on our middle school and high school athletes. And then they've also decided to stagger that and start with high school one week and then bring the middle school in the next week. And part of that is just from a procedural perspective and with the way things have changed now, to have an opportunity to screen those kids and work on how they're going to move them in and out. They've got a great plan, open doors, and I feel like they've done a good job with that, and I would recommend that we approve the summer pride athletic camp for 2020. Do you have any questions?
Is this going to be about the same amount of time allotted from the coaches as previous summers compared?
We don't know. It's really going to depend... It's really going to depend on what the numbers are. So, the goal is to never have more than 10 in any group, and they've got three different groups that will rotate from indoor, and they'll go outside into the weight room, and then they'll go outside to the track, and they'll just kind of make a rotation. The goal is to never... They won't have more than 10. And so, it's really going to depend on what the numbers are depending on how many hours they spend. And I know initially they talked about maybe having to come back in the evening to accommodate some students that maybe it wouldn't fit, some of their high school students, and doing a rotation for them. So, they answered a question. We really don't know what those hours will look like at this point.
And for the summer pride, there's a deadline to get the application in so you can... Kane, possibly the outstanding... I mean, does he know what kind of numbers you're looking at? I used to be asking. I don't see it, but I don't... Maybe I went a bit quick.
We're not going to turn anybody away.
Okay.
We're not going to turn anybody away.
Because they may find out about it and...
Right.
Think, "Oh, I didn't know that was going on." I was just asking because it... Oh, I was, I was just asking because they'll, they'll need to understand we have a whole new set of constraints we have defined by now.
And there, and there may be some times that might, they might be assigned to once time's filled up.
Okay.
They'll have to be flexible, yes.
Okay, so it's like the, is that 6A EMDs and 7B for the high intensity grades?
For the, for the high school.
That's the A and the N, sorry.
Yes, that's for the high school, ninth through 12, yes.
And they, they would attend one of those, right?
They will, those are, yes, that would be a cycle or a pattern, yes.
But the hour and a half, they spend 30 minutes at each one of the three sessions, or?
Each one of the three spots, I guess.
Well, I would like to commend the coaches because this takes a lot of organization and you know, I'm thrilled that we're able to try and reach out and do the best we can by living within the rules and regulations we've been dealt and yet still offer what's best for our kids. So, I commend that, appreciate that so very much.
Any other questions?
Questions, confirm?
So, move.
Second?
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
6.5, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the following renewal contracts for member services for fiscal year 21. 6.5.1 ADT. Move these all at once or one at one at a time? Probably one at a time.
So, our ADT contract is for our bus drivers. Our bus drivers, Mr. Ellis sends those in to the captain each year, all of our, all of our drivers, CDL licensed drivers, and then they will test us twice a year or once a semester, anyone that operates a school year. We've used ADT, it's worked out well. I would recommend the approval of this contract.
So, move.
Second?
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
6.5.2, Earl Denny Carroll, CPA.
The contract for auditing services required for the school district. We've used Mr. Carroll for many years and I would recommend approving this contract.
So, move.
Second?
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
6.5.3, Oklahoma teacher and major effectiveness.
This is our software program that we use when we, when our administrators go into a classroom. They use this program to evaluate teachers. It has all the indicators on it, preloaded, and then they use this with their evaluations. We've also started using the OKTLD. It, it has the administrators' evaluation rubric on there also. So, we've combined everything and put it on one software program. And it's worked out really well for us, and I would recommend the approval of the OKTLD. Make the motion that we approve this. OK, O-T-L-D.
Second?
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
6.5.4, OSSBA Employment Services.
The OSSBA Employment Services has really important for us this year as we've worked through our unemployment claims and fraudulent claims that we've had. It's been an excellent partnership, and we'd like to continue this contract, so I would recommend that's approved.
So, move.
Second?
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
6.5.5, OSSBA membership.
Our OSSBA membership provides us our symbol meetings, which we do our paperless meetings. It also provides our board policy, and so they keep our, our board policy online for us. And then also provides the superintendent evaluation, so I would recommend that we continue our OSSBA membership.
So, move.
Second?
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
6.5.6, School to Work.
School to Work is our vocational rehab that we partner with the state. The state, we will send in our form for reimbursement, and the state will reimburse us as our students work at local businesses. This has been a good partnership for our district, and I recommend it's approved.
So, move.
Second?
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
6.5.7, Woods County Commissioners.
This agreement is saying that we will help with any litigation fees that might occur with protests. And, you know, Woods County and really our Palt County both have been good as far as getting the money that we need and collected with our protests. And so, I would recommend that we enter into this agreement with Woods County.
So, move.
Second?
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
6.6, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the open student transfers for the 2021 school year.
Okay, you can see on the attachment, we have four students listed there. Those students have all been attending public schools, and I would recommend that we continue to allow them to attend our district through the open transfer policy. I make the motion that we approve this item.
Second?
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
6.7, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the temporary appropriations for fiscal year 21.
So, we received our temporary appropriations from Mr. Carroll, and this is what we can spend until we receive our estimate of needs, which is normally around October. And if you, if you look back at what our temporary appropriations were last year, it's about a billion less. And so, we, you know, we believe we're going to collect more than that. And I don't think it's any reason to be alarmed, but I do think it's something to make note of as a board is that we continue to see the effects of the economy and where we're at. Are there any questions about temporary appropriations?
So, did you take a percenting of 90% of what?
Yes.
What our budget was?
Yes. And you talked, you asked earlier Tiffany about the, our building fund and our renovation of art room. And you can see with our temporary appropriations what we're looking at there with 2.9. So, we will, through the stewardship of this board and previous superintendents, it's allowed us to be able to do some of those renovations and still be able to take care of some of our other needs during this time.
Motion, we accept 6.7, let's present.
Second?
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Do you need business?
No, ma'am.
Post executive session to conduct ongoing evaluation superintendent per 25 Oklahoma State statutes, section 307b.
So, move.
Second?
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.